Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 9 meeting of the Hingham School Committee. Just by way of explanation, if people are watching this, I think tomorrow, right? Because we're not recording live. But we are in the conference room of Hingham High School. We had planned to have our meeting here tonight because we were going to be attending the sports night meeting with Dr. Austin and listening to his remarks. That meeting was canceled, but we had already posted this was the location of the meeting, so we didn't want to change the location. So if anyone's wondering why we're sitting around this cozy little table, that is why. Anyway, I will call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by Harbor Media. I'm assuming no one is intending to video or audio the meeting. All right. Item two on the agenda, we'll move right into our business. Approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of this school committee meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee held on February 11, 2020.
No second. Second. And Liza? Any discussion comments?
Just one comment.
Yep.
On page two, it starts with town manager, town mayor. I think it should be town administrator.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, we'll make that change. Thank you. And then how about the minutes of the February 24th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of this school committee meeting held on February 24, 2020.
Thanks, Liza. Any comments or changes on that?
I just wanted to see if we could change some of the language. Under 6.2, it's several lines down. It starts with, "Nest Curenti inquired why the town had underestimated the amount of revenue last fiscal year resulting in $2.8 million reverting to the fund balance." I was hoping we could change it to say, "Nest Curenti inquired if the town is being too conservative in its forecasting process. We may continue to have a surplus each year. 2019 surplus amounted to $2.8 million, which then reverted to fund balance." And then my second proposal is, it says the town's fund balance is close to 30%. That comment that I made where it says the town's fund balance is close to 30%, even though the town's own financial policy is 16 to 20%, that was after Mary Power had gotten back up. So I was proposing to move that one sentence after the Mary Power stated the fund balance money should not be used for ongoing expenses, so on and so forth.
Everyone good with that? These amendments?
Yeah, could you just send me?
And I have one more change. Under number nine, the first sub-bullet under committee reports, it should be fiscal year '21 budget, not '12.
Yeah. No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for those updates, Ness. Item three on the agenda is public comment period, so we encourage community engagement and we welcome any questions, but since we have a small crowd, I'm assuming no one is here to... Any comments for things on the agenda? All right, then we will move on to item number four, superintendent's report. Dr. Austin, you are on.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things. One, we have the March enrollment, and that's in your packet as well. We looked to the bottom of that where it says total K-12 in district enrollment, which is 4,191, which we've stayed fairly consistent, about 10 more than we had a year ago at this time in June of '19. And that stayed pretty much very consistent with not much movement either way. So we are at 4,191 as of today, so no real changes. Second part of my report is a facilities report. You will also have that in your packet. There's a lot of extensive work that happened in February, and once again, we'll give accolades to our facilities department and Doug and Katie in particular who work very hard at getting things done. Also noted are things that are happening in March, which is several bullets here that I'll go over quickly. We're going to do the transportation building, dry valve, fire protection, sprinkler system compressor will be replaced following a recent failure. We will prepare, preparations are underway for the scheduled 15-year preventative maintenance of the two 125-ton air-cooled rooftop chiller units at the high school. PA system exterior speakers upgrade will be performed at East Elementary. American Fence Company will install and fencing at the high school Pleasant Street security gate, which is something we've been talking about with security. We already did it? Okay. The fields and grounds prep is underway. Days like today, certainly it feels like summer already and almost 70 degrees. The high school heating boiler plant operational assessments are performed in-house, and the kitchen hood cleaning scheduled for this month as well. So it'll be a busy month of March, and those are the projects that we have on the agenda. So that's all I have for facilities in my superintendent's report.
Do you want to give your coronavirus update under communications? Okay. All right. So we'll move on to 5.1.
Communications, received by us, I have none, so good.
Then Emma's not here tonight, so we do not have a student report. So then 5.3?
Sure. Just, I gave you a copy, and I know you've all received of the letter that I put out today regarding letter to the community. And a lot of work went into and a lot of thought on one of the community. I want to be, I'll certainly state for the people who are listening to us today, there are, as much as the rise in Massachusetts and the number of cases with coronavirus is absolutely on the rise, we went from 28 yesterday to 41 today, today's numbers, I will tell you that there are no known cases in Plymouth County. And so that's very good news. At the same time, we took a lot of consideration into minimizing, to the extent possible, times when we have large social gatherings where social distancing, et cetera, and lots of people come from the outside into our buildings can be minimized. And we certainly did. The purpose of why I chose to cancel tonight's athletic meeting, as well as the concert tomorrow night for the orchestra, and then the Mr. Joy opportunities on Thursday, was really to, those can all be rescheduled at another time. Those things we can do in another way. And I thought it minimized the risk to our school community, particularly since things really did change and escalated over the weekend. So this was out of an abundance of caution. This is not because we have some case here in town that I'm aware of. I am not aware of such things. In fact, we've been told by, as I said, by the Department of Health, there are no cases in Plymouth County, and that includes Hingham, of course. And so this was out of an abundance of caution. I will also clearly say this was a one-week-at-a-time decision. I will decide next week's, later on this week, so Wednesday or Thursday, we'll start to look at what the news is. We need to get a good handle of understanding of where this is going. And it's obviously escalating faster than any of us are feeling comfortable with, and so we want to understand it, how to manage it well in our schools, to the absolute extent possible to ensure that our schools are safe for all of our students and staff. So that's why I canceled those events today. And so that's, you have that in your packet, and we've done that in every way that we could. Put it on Facebook, it's in the Hingham anchor, it's on, I went to the parents, I asked the secretaries to send all the parents, so everyone should have that. And hopefully they do. That's it.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item six, unfinished business. We, first item is 6.1, to hear an update on the administration's proposed preliminary operating budget for fiscal year '21.
Thank you. In your pack as well as our proposed budget as it is, at this time, there are no changes to that preliminary proposed budget, which is the 5.93% increase, which is, we are obviously awaiting final word from AdCom at this time. I will say, I think after, since this is my first year in learning the ways of Hingham and the way that we present budgets, we had heard many, lots of feedback, I don't want to say many, but lots of feedback regarding particularly revolving fund accounts that we have and how those are being used, and if those can be used to offset the budget. And after discussion with the chair and thinking about how those can be used, I would, I would, I want to say, support the recommendation that Michelle Eyre had last week in talking about setting up some sort of committee, whether that's an ad hoc committee, a working committee, to look at our revolving funds and to determine some way forward through potentially using those funds, and making some recommendations to the school committee as a whole about the use of those funds, not just for this year in the short term, but in the longer term as we move forward. So those are, so no changes to the budget at this time, and there are no changes to what we expect for revenue. I think we all understood the forecast that we were given by the Board of Selectmen and by the town administrator. And so this time, I would second that thought of having another committee of some sort of finance to look at that ongoing.
Can you restate the numbers that the Board of Selectmen had proposed?
If I had my computer open with me, I would. Sorry. Do you have, sorry. Oh, sorry. They were in my thing. Do you have, I'm sorry, do you have them handy? Because I don't have my computer open.
Oh, no. That's why I was...
Oh, I'm sorry. John or Paul?
I heard numbers, but we kept moving.
Yes, I apologize, because I don't have my laptops over there. John or Paul, do you, or George?
I'm correct. I'm sorry, George can do it, yeah.
Well, I don't know if he wants to.
ACES voted the number that was in the Board of Selectmen had, and then added back in 123,000.
Right. They voted the status quo budget.
Status quo.
ACES voted the status quo budget, yes.
So that was the...
The 4.4.
4.4, yeah, 4.4%.
Yes.
Was that 56,735 something, and a few dollars, 985 or something like that? I can't remember the number, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait a minute, let's see. 56,73985, is that something?
Yeah. 73985.
And then the Board of Selectmen, was that number less?
Less 123,000, whatever the difference was of using the revolving fund. Right. 607, right? 56, 607? Yeah. I'm doing that off the top of my head.
Would you repeat those numbers?
So the status quo budget was 56,730,985, which was a 4.4%, 4.43% increase. So then the...
123,828.
123,828. So then the Board of Selectmen would have been that less?
Right. It would have been status quo, less than 123,828.
Okay.
06, yeah, follows right. So 56, 607, 157?
Right. Yep. That's the number.
56, 607.
157.
Sorry about that. I should have brought my, should have got my laptop up here. All right. And so there's, John, we don't have any leave of absences or any additional things that have come up?
Those went the other way.
Okay.
I mean, I picked up a couple of errors I made in the budget.
Okay.
Where I didn't have them accounted for, but they are coming back.
Okay. All right.
So I'm not making money right now. Losing it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So the thought of the, and I was thinking more of the, of setting up, at least for now, just because we're sort of coming to the end of this particular committee's makeup with the election coming up in early May, that we could, at least for the interim period, put an ad hoc committee together of folks to just assess and evaluate the revolving fund accounts, see what's in there, and then maybe make a proposal to, with the administration's support, make a proposal to the school committee of how we could use some of those funds, and even maybe sort of craft some, or start drafting some policies around what the, what sort of revolving balances should we keep, right? Sort of what's the ceiling and the floor? What's the minimum we should have? What's the maximum we should hold? And coming up with a plan of action as to how we can use those funds, right? I think that, you know, I mean, we know, we've all been to the meetings, and we've gotten a lot of support from the community this year and every year, but a lot of people talking about the budget this year, and, I mean, we all recognize that advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen have a really difficult job. Our job is not any easier, right? And it's our job to, you know, show the town and the elected officials what the schools need, and, you know, as we've said multiple times, we will work with what we are provided with, and we fully are grateful for everything the town does to support the schools. And, you know, we'll figure out ways that we can come to the table with some potential funds that we might have, so that we can fund some of these tier-one critical needs that Dr. Austin and the administration have identified. So I think we're, I think we're heading in a good direction. I think, I think, you know, I think the approach has been very collaborative. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, everyone has different agendas, and everyone has different needs that need to be met, but I think we're all working together to get there, and I think we can do that. And I think this committee would be helpful to sort of get in there and dig in. So are people supportive of...
I agree.
Yeah? Okay. All right. I guess I would just say then, if, just sort of the usual way when we assign a committee, if people want to email me, if they're interested in being on it, let me know, and then I'll pick three members, if that sounds like a good number. Okay? And we'll work with Paul and John? Okay? All right. Great. All right, great.
That's all on the budget. Do you have any other updates for that, John?
No.
That's pretty much it.
Yeah.
And, George, I'm sorry, but is advisory potentially voting tomorrow night?
Potentially.
Potentially? Okay.
It's on the schedule.
It's on the schedule. All right. Thank you. So we would have some more information tomorrow after the, potentially after the advisory committee meeting to start making decisions.
Just based on past practice, we then, and when we have not put forth a vote, or when we voted something which was then changed by the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen, we then would revote so that we had a voted budget going to town meeting. So would we do that at our next meeting, potentially based on what advisory committee votes?
Yes. That would be, yeah. I think that would be my expectation.
And then, in the past, we have waited until, like, May to make a vote of the itemization of the money, so that we...
So after we get town meeting approval.
And, well, once we get town meeting approval, and then once we even get closer to knowing actual, you know, staffing changes around still, but that we vote something that we share with the community of this is how we intend to spend the money. Because, and maybe if this finance committee can maybe target coming up with some recommendations by sometime in May, so we can incorporate that into what we discuss and we vote of going forward. That's what I would suggest, because, you know, how are we even gonna, are we gonna substitute things that we're doing now? We don't want to do anymore? Are we gonna pay for things revolving accounts? Are we gonna hire a contract consultant position as opposed to, you know, an employee to fulfill the services that we need done? I think by May, we would have a better sense of our pennies and dimes.
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds like...
Just to make sure that we have a plan?
Yes. Yeah, no, that's perfect. Thank you. Because that is, that sounds like sort of the traditional calendar, at least since I've been on, and it makes, and I think that makes perfect sense, and it gets us right to where we need to be as we round out the school year and this fiscal, and close out this fiscal year budget.
Knowing where we're going.
Yes. Exactly. Okay. All right. And then, just in the, just one other update, in the spirit of collaborating as well, we also took some of the points away that were made at the Board of Selectmen meeting, and we're gonna, there's gonna be a small meeting of, I believe it's Karen Johnson, Victor Bolterra, myself, Dr. Austin, Carrie may attend as a secretary as well, just to talk through, just going forward, and, you know, how our budget process works, how our timing works on voting. As I know, there's been some, confusion isn't the right word, but it's been done, some, you know, some years it's done one way, other years it's done another way, and just to sort of hash that out. And then I had actually also proposed, which I think is being planned, is that after the election, that there be a meeting of newly elected officials, particularly those who are going to be overseeing the budget, to give them a calendar, sort of what are the expectations from the town? This is the calendar of when you can expect, you know, forecast information, when your budgets are going to be due. Because I think there is, sometimes has been sort of an expectation that, you know, oh, everybody knows this, because, you know, just because some of the people have been doing it for 10 years, but there are new people who are coming in who aren't recognizing what the calendar is. So they were thinking that'd be a good, sort of a town-wide elected official orientation day in June.
In the past, Sue Nickerson has done an overview of the town budget for new advisory committee members. And on certain years, she also included school committee members at that same session. I know when I started, I was included, and then when there were other new people brought on after I was brought on.
Yep.
I coordinated that they could attend as well.
Okay.
So I suggest, you know, whether, and I don't know if whether that was done in recent years? Okay. So maybe getting back into that practice of just even explaining what the forecast is.
Right.
Explaining the budget. And it may be good to...
And I think everything, right? The warrant process for folks who are new in towns that don't, I mean, departments that may not have a budget, right? So they understand the timing, and, you know, that somebody doesn't wake up on days of January 20th, what? Meeting's not until April.
Yeah. So there've been bits and pieces of that type of orientation done in the past. So you can bring that up.
Yeah.
You know, you can resurrect.
Great model after that.
It's not all from fresh new, just make sure it gets done.
Yeah. That's great. All right. Thank you. All right. So any other questions or comments on the budget? All right. Sounds good. All right. That was 6.2. Sorry, no, that was not 6.2. Well, I guess it sort of was. It was continued discussion of the operating budget. Moving on to 6.3, an update on the Traces program and to act as appropriate. So Dr. Austin has some new information that has come up in the past since our last meeting, and a potential proposal to fix that.
Thank you.
New problem.
Yeah. At our last meeting, we talked about having a renovation that would occur at 308 Cushing Street, which was the old light plant. The town administrator did get out and get a estimate, which came in substantially higher than they anticipated, at $1.7 million, to do the work necessary to ready that space for us. It is our understanding at this time that that's not going to be supported by the town side to move forward with a warrant article to do that, which puts us back into looking for a space, again, for traces. Given, and so there's two things that I'm doing just to keep you updated. One, we are in our office continually looking at any other space in Hingham to make sure there's nothing else available, and everything we're finding is a little bit more expensive, actually, than what we're already paying. And so, two, we're looking at, and Mr. Ferris will be contacting the, our, the person we have the lease with, our contract, and looking at a longer term, moving that out for several years, which makes more sense financially at this point. This is a $60,000 cost per year, so that we're aware that is not in the budget. And when we've just talked about revolving fund accounts, that'll have to come from revolving fund accounts in order to be able to fund that. So any transportation, any use of that building, or any improvements, would have to come out of those accounts. So we have to plan on that. But that's the plan as of right now. If we can continue to stay in Waymouth, and that's working, I'm hearing the good things about that, that people are happy there. We will continue to assess that and to make sure going forward. We will, so that I'm very clear, we will have a program, one or the other, in the fall, and hopefully that's, that's not moving them any further than what we've already had to move them, if that's working well. And that seems to be the most logical thing for us to do. I don't know if you want to add anything else to that?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's all contingent on the ability to extend the lease. I mean, because I was very clear at the start that we were just in this in June, so, you know, provided everything's working fine, I hope that he finds a superintendent and will be able to do that, so.
Yes. Yeah, and just to clarify that, I think the issue was at 28, or 308 Cushing Street, the cost of the renovations was much higher than anticipated.
Anyone anticipated.
And so that was why it was, decided not to move forward with an ORN article. And then the issue with trying to then go back and put through our warrant article to maybe renovate Building 179, is that there are some restrictions on the use of that building, and I think that, because it had already been there, being used as an educational facility, it was sort of grandfathered in that you could keep it, but if you were doing any substantial renovation, you could no longer, that wasn't, that property wasn't, can't be used for, sorry, educational uses, can only be used for recreational. So that wasn't an option to go to resurrect our warrant article. And so it seems like our best option is to, if the landlord will have us, to stay in the property at Waymouth. Because I'm hearing the saying that the space is great for the students.
Really nice big space.
Yeah.
And I think there's, it's got great potential there for possibly moving robotics out there at some point, as well as expanding the program if possible in the future. I think that could be in that space because it's so large, and it's a great, great location for that program.
So also, just so everyone knows, there are some other big capital items the town's now looking at. Tonight at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, they are, I believe, voting to reopen the warrant, because they were able to come to agreement on land to put a new fire station, or public safety building, fire station and police station on 3A at the, somebody told me, I think it's, is it the land where the boat company, right by, in front of the parking lot?
Yeah, by Freshmark.
Right, by Freshmark, yeah.
Oh, right.
And so their vote, on their agenda tonight is feasibility money for that building, and establishing a building committee, and then feasibility money to redesign the senior center in Town Hall using the police station space to expand the senior center, and a building committee for that. And then there's a thing on their agenda.
The wharfs.
Oh, the wharfs. Yeah, they finally got the number on rebuilding the wharfs, right?
They're not going forward, because the engineer, the original specifications called for, I think, 16 feet.
Right.
And the town engineer that we have contracted with has recommended go another foot above that. So they're gonna pull it for this year.
Oh, they're pulling that? Oh, okay.
Pull it completely.
Oh, I think...
That's the note I got.
Oh.
Okay.
That'll be next year's.
But, and then that estimate also came in higher than the original estimate, and so I'm sure they want to save money for that. So I'm sure all those things, they didn't, apparently the land came together just in the past couple of days.
Yeah.
And the fire station has been on the list for a long time, and the senior center too. So... So, I'm sure that kind of bumped any opportunity for the 305 Cushing Street or whatever, unfortunately. But, we will make the best of it, hopefully, and there we are. But, just those things, I want to make sure everybody knew about them, because those are, the dominos are falling into place pretty quickly.
It feels like it's been a while since we've been waiting for one to, one had to go over first.
One fell and the others.
And they all start coming in.
They all up.
Exactly. Which could be great for the town, because there's a lot of capital needs out there, and new buildings, so that will be great. All right, any other questions on the traces? All right, 7.1 is to discuss the Student Opportunity Act, District Plan, and Act As Appropriate. Do you want to discuss?
Yeah, I'll just say briefly on that, and Dr. Bolack is not here tonight, he had to, he was, he's on a NIOSC visit with the new standards to hopefully help us out to prepare for the future with that. And he's leading the way on this, the Student Opportunity Act, and filling out the, what we do with the short form. Now that said, at this point, I know that a lot of people have been asking for the short form, where that is, we haven't seen many forms come from DSE, DESE, so we're still waiting for things. And so as soon as we have that, we'll get to work on that. But to be clear about the type of money that we have, in our, in our total budget this year, and what we've counted for revenue in the Governor's Chapter 70 budget, that included that SOA money, which was about $170,000, I'm estimating, about $170,000 of that $8 million that we get, is in that, that's the money we're talking about. And I think it was an increase of $300 and some odd thousand this year from the Governor's budget.
The total.
Of that, yeah, in total, for over last year, that increase, about $170,000 is for the, that money of the Student Opportunity Act. That said, all of those things that we've incorporated already into our revenue, we've already incorporated into our budget, so there's no additional plan, we're going to have to just fill out the form as it comes in, and make the process work. So, we will update you hopefully in two weeks, because we're getting closer to that April 1 deadline. And yeah, we don't have all the information we need to be able to complete that work, so I'm hoping that we certainly do get that very quickly, so we can move forward.
So, there, a big part of that was engaging the community with the Student Opportunity Act? Is there, where are the plans around that?
My understanding, in talking with Dr. Bolack, is to have probably a community forum at some point when we get closer to that, and we figure out what this looks like and how we do it. But, we're going to have to have it, you're right, in the next few weeks, to be able to do that. So, that will be the plan, as far as I know. It was required, we need to at least have a community forum, so we could have a meeting, we'll post it, have people come in and be able to ask questions, and share with them what our thoughts are, and get their input.
Is there any plan to reach out to CPAC and the parents of David Schlemmichler?
I think we'll reach out to all of them when we do that, so that they can all be included in the meeting.
Just given the situation of groups meeting, if you can't, like, if something happens and we couldn't have, like, a forum with a large number of people's coming, is there an option to do something on, like, surveys online? Do you know, or do you know, Carrie?
Yep.
There is, okay, you can engage, you're sort of open how you can engage with the community?
Yes, yes.
As long as we get that input, I mean, I think.
Okay.
We're going to do whatever we have to do to be able to get input from people. So we will, we will commit to that, in one way or another.
All right, great. Anything else? All right. 7.2, to discuss the 2020 warrant report.
I would say the warrant report is a new item to me. We know we have to get that in on the 13th, so I said that I'll certainly work with, and hopefully John and I will work on that together to get that done and submitted by the 13th. But we have not drafted that as of yet. We will get to that very quickly.
Right, so it is due.
It's on the 13th, it's on Friday the 13th.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to 7.3, to receive the results of the bid for Plymouth River School Vestable and act as recommended by the Director of Business and Support Service, yeah, sorry, Business and Support Services, Mr. Ferris. Do you want to?
We went out with a bid, unfortunately, for the Plymouth River, but that's the security that, we had that designed, and we went out, but unfortunately, we only received one bid. And it just came from a good bidder, which was GBW, which was the same bidder that did our clear story windows. The bid came in at $224,000. I mean, this job doesn't warrant that kind of expense. And I think that the, you know, when you think about the clear story windows cost $478, and all this is built in a couple of frost walls, and some glass and some doors in. But, from what the contract, from what Habib tells me, is that a lot of bidders are just putting in a big price today, and some schools would be desperate, and, you know, they may in fact go for that. So, the, and then we talked about it later and said, okay, is there, you know, is there a way that we could get more bidders? And we did a couple of things in the bid spec that we probably didn't have to do, because, I mean, we estimated this job to come in somewhere between $80,000 and $110,000, or, you know, in that range, and that's probably what it's worth. But, in the, in the bid specification, they called for a DKIM update statement, and the minimum for a DKIM, minimum requirement for a DKIM update statement is $150,000. So maybe some of the smaller bidders thought, oh geez, you know, I can't bid that, because I don't want to do a DKIM update statement, because they're an awful lot of work.
That's what it is, it's a lot of work.
A DKIM update statement? Oh, yeah, and they have to be DKIM certified, and, you know, I mean, for that level of job, so. That was one thing. The other thing, too, is we, of course, we wanted it during the summer, right? And when you think of a contractor saying, oh, I got to do this little job for $110,000, I'd prefer to do one for a half a million or a million, okay? That probably worked against us as well. So, I think that we talked, we could probably, you know, alter the bid specification a little bit by basically stating, you know, a DKIM statement is only required, you know, basically saying, we expect this job to be somewhere around $100,000 range, but if a DKIM statement is required if you're bid over $150,000, so submit one if you're bidding over $150,000. And then the other thing, too, is if we could think of a way to phase it, because we're not going to be able to do it during the summer. But if we can phase it, and maybe shut off that front entrance for a little while, and use a different entrance to get into Plymouth River, you know, we could do it while school's in session, and then it may be more attractive to some potential bidders. So I do believe that by talking to Melissa and the folks there, that we'd be able to arrange some type of schedule. So at this point, I'm recommending this 224 is just out of sight, I don't think it's a value, so I'm recommending that we reject all bids, and then I'll work with the designer and with Melissa to, you know, come up with a phase and things, so we can rephrase the bid and change the DKIM statement with some different language, and give it another shot. And I do think we'll get a better price of one that's within our budget. We had, previous year, we asked for $50,000, we'd used some of that for design, about $28,000, $22,000 to $28,000. So then we got another $80,000. So all in all, we have about $110,000, if we had to use subsidized with a building revolving account or something to that effect, we could. So, you know, we're in that, in that ballpark, and I think we can come in around that price. So the request tonight really is to reject all bids, and, you know, and then we bid it, you know, when the time is appropriate.
It's just interesting, because I was thinking that last meeting, we, there was the, we'd only gotten one bid on, I think, the van, too. I'm just wondering, do you think it's a troubling trend that we may be seeing, that folks are sort of interested in doing the municipal contracts anymore?
Well, I mean, you know, the past couple of weeks might change some things, because I think that, you know, business is going to slow down a little bit, so, you know, I mean, you come up, you hear some small jobs, and, you know, but, you know, we may get a little bit of change. I mean, when everything's booming, and I can't be bothered with this.
Right.
Or, oh gee, I forgot that one, okay, no problem, there's plenty of other opportunities out there, so. But I do think, I know that that DKIM statement was significant, because there was a contractor that called, that even said, you know, oh, do you really have to do a DKIM certificate? You know, and I don't think the answer was, only if your bid's $150,000. And this, this contractor actually did a high school, to blow out the food service area.
Yeah.
You know, and that was under a $100,000 project, and this is not dissimilar.
Oh, okay.
But, didn't, couldn't bid, because the spec required a DKIM update statement. So, if we make it a conditional.
Is this project too big for the house doctor concept?
No, the house doctor's doing it.
The house doctor is doing it.
The house doctor's doing the design work.
Design work?
Yeah.
I'm talking about the buildup.
Oh, the, the house doctor doesn't build.
Oh, man.
The house doctor is just a design contract. So if you need to get some smaller project design, you can use the house doctor, instead of having to go through, you know, that four, six week process where you got to do an RFP, do a request for qualifications, and, you know, then select a designer, and then negotiate the fee, and then they, then they do the design work, and then you got to bid it out, so it just elongates the process. The house doctor shortens that process.
It'd be nice if this could be done in stages, like you say.
Yeah, if we can, if we could phase it, or, I mean, we have the gym area there, too, maybe they could come in through the gym, and, you know, that front could be sealed off for, you know, six weeks or so, because it's not going to be a big job. But, you know, I mean, I do think that there's good possibilities, or they could probably go around the back and come in the cafeteria on the other side, so there's a few other alternatives there, and I think we could do that, so that we could actually do the job September, October, when no one else is doing school jobs, you know?
Yeah, and you can't block off the entrance pretty far out to.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
And that's the contractor responsible for fencing off the area, making sure there's a good buffer zone, and, I mean, they do that stuff all the time, so.
And it's not going inside.
No.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's not outside, I mean, we could block the, there could be some rails or something on the inside, too, to just block it off, you know?
Yeah.
Some wood structure or something, temporary.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure it can, it can definitely be made safe for the kids while we.
Kids with lots of watch it while they're eating wash.
Yeah, right. When you're concerning.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you. Somebody want to make a motion, Carlos? You look ready?
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Director of Business Service to reject our bids, and that we plan and put it out for rebid at the appropriate time with the appropriate language.
Second? Thank you, yes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's everyone? All right, great, thank you. Thank you, John. All right, 7.4, we have a proposed new policy, 3.11, school calendar, first reading. So Carrie, do you want to walk us through?
So our current policy requires us to bid on, oh, it's a bid.
It's all about the money today.
To vote on the upcoming school calendar on May 1st, which is pretty late for families who are trying, for everyone who's trying to plan. So what this does, we pretty much adopted the MASCE calendar policy, and it says that the superintendent would submit a draft of the calendar annually on or before March 1st to the school committee, and we could vote on it then, which would give us, it'd be earlier and be better for planning purposes. The other thing this policy does is it adds some language about the minimum numbers of school days, and the structured learning time. That's straight from the regulations, and it's just good for, to have the school committee thinking about that. It doesn't really, I mean, we have to do that either way, but people may not know about that. The, so, yeah, so that's what this does. The only, the only difference, and I thought about this afterwards, is our current policy requires us to vote on school committee, the school committee calendar itself, and to come up with that and publish it. This doesn't, is silent on it, so I don't know what, this is the school committee shall also adopt annually a schedule of regular school committee meetings for the ensuing year.
So that's our policy right now?
Yes, right now.
Okay.
The MASCE policy doesn't have.
It doesn't say that, so that's the one thing that I noticed after we had met up policy.
It seems to make sense to.
Well, we can.
Just take that sentence and put it in.
Put it in the, a different policy, or make a policy about school committee calendar.
Right, yeah.
When we're updating the other.
Yeah.
We just make sure we capture that someplace.
Yeah, and we can even add it to the organizational meeting that we have.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So we can do that, but, yeah, we just make sure we remember that. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, so it's the first read.
Okay. That makes sense, all right.
Quick comment on the next two pages, the two warrants that are blank. I was in last week, and they weren't up, and I haven't been in this week, so you'll have them next time.
All right.
Haven't seen them.
Thank you. All right. All right, so we are moving right along here. All right, 7.5, to receive notification of some appointments, those are listed in your packet. And then, 7.6 is to receive a notification of two resignations, Edward Chapini, custodian at Foster School, and Crystal Rich, parent educator at Hingham Middle School, so we thank them for their work with the Hingham Public Schools. Item number eight is 48 hours. We had something in there.
If I could just talk a little bit more about coronavirus and our response to that. And again, referring to the letter that I wrote today, I want the people at home of naught, who have either not had an opportunity to read that, or haven't seen that yet, you know, we have taken incredible steps in our schools to keep them safe and healthy and clean. I thank John Ferris and the custodial staff for that. We have, and I'm going to get the name of the guns wrong, Victory.
Victory electrostatic guns.
Victory electrostatic guns. We purchased four back in December, that were mainly for the high school, the middle school, the busing, and the foster elementary. We've purchased three more in January that covers now all of our schools, plus the bus garage. So every school has this electrostatic gun, that basically sterilizes every, every place it goes into, so we go into every room. In January and February, we were doing three days a week, plus one day on the weekend, just trying to maintain, and it did a fairly good job of maintaining the influenza on what was going on, even though we still have cases, it did a fairly good job of that. We have now ramped that up to five days per week, so, and I think once on the weekend as well, or no?
Five days a weekend before, after any large events that we have, like such as a basketball game, if we were to have one, or, you know, if we were going to do this thing tonight, they would have fogged the auditorium, and then fog it afterwards, too.
So that is done every single night in this entire school system, every room is fogged, as in every single night. At the same time, we also wiped out our switches, we wiped our handles, everything they were touching in common areas, and then, of course, the bathrooms are cleaned thoroughly every single night. And again, as John said, if we have a basketball game, or we have some sort of event, we go in to do that again. You know, I had questions from the public about how did we maintain after the election? Well, we bring these guns in, and we fog everything, and resterilize things. And so, is that 100%? Probably nothing's 100% safe, but it's a good start for us to be able to do that. So we will continue that right through as we continue to move forward with this issue that we have with coronavirus everywhere. And again, I'll repeat to everyone, there is not one case that's known in Plymouth County as of right now, but we will take those precautions. We will continue to look at all of our large group meetings, where particularly where we're bringing people from the inside to come into the school system, to ensure that that's something we need to do, number one. If we need to do something, then we'll take all the precautions we can to ensure that everyone is safe. If it's not something we absolutely have to do, that could be rescheduled, we will continue to look at that, and we will do that on a weekly basis, as, you know, we progress through the next couple of months. And we hope, like all of you, that this continues to get under control, and we see decreases, but if it increases, we will have a response. I will also say that we met last week with the Department of Health, with our nursing services and our administrators, to go over our emergency protocol. We don't have an answer for what happens if we close down, what does remote learning look like? We don't have those answers yet, and we will wait for guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in state, to determine how we all move forward, because it won't be just us, it'll be a complete system of people moving forward, and we'll have to certainly address that when that happens, or if it happens. So we will do that, but we will continue, and I talk probably daily, if not multiple times today, to the Department of Health in Hingham, who have been incredibly helpful to us in our communications and in keeping us informed. I can't say enough good about that, Susani in particular, Kathy. I can't say enough good about that, Susani in particular, Kathy Crowley, I think, is listening.
Yep.
That has been contacting me regularly and giving me updates, so I thank them very much from the Department of Public Health in Hingham, they did an outstanding job. So in short, we're doing everything we certainly know how to do physically to maintain the best of our ability, that our schools are safe and healthy at all times. We will remain vigilant, we will have communication, we will continue those communications, particularly with the community as that need arises, but that's gonna happen probably more frequently on a probably weekly or so basis, that we'll just have to update things and let them know when things change. So that's just kind of the update of where we are. I will also say, and I talked about the schools, the buses are also fogged, every single bus is fogged every single night, after the use, every night. So every bus comes in, they all get fogged down, they all get sanitized. Now, that can't stop that when children get on it, does it have something, yes, and people might be exposed to that, but we can't stop that from any contagious disease, any communicable disease has that opportunity. However, we will kill that at night to the best of our abilities, so that we all are very aware of what we're doing in the schools. And I appreciate the efforts of our administrators and our teachers. One of the things that we're struggling with, we ask people to stay home when they don't feel well, and that's really taken a toll on trying to get subs in, and we know that teachers have a lot on their plates, and they're doing the very best they can, and talked to the advisory last week, they're doing the best they can to cover, you know, as many classes as possible. There's just not a good answer, because a lot of people are out everywhere, we've asked them to stay out, and I want to be clear, we're asking people to stay out, even when you have a cough that you're not sure what it is, please stay home. We'd rather you do that, if you're sneezing, if those kinds of things are happening, which normally would not keep us home. Those things would not normally be something we stay home with. We now are being advised those are things that we should stay home with until we have that gone and we come back in. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who is working very hard and diligently to make sure that we have a safe and healthy environment, so.
Michelle, just a comment we happen to have with us tonight, and our audience, a member of the Hingham Board of Health, who might want to add something. Mr. Kurt Stiltz, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I'm here actually as a citizen, and I'm a board of health, just a member of it, and I did attend the meeting last week, sat behind Kevin Quatt. I did bring in my comments on the preparedness plan, I gave it to you.
Excellent.
Yeah, but this is, this is going to get more difficult before it gets easier, I think. And where the school system is the largest concentration of people within our town to control that spread of viruses that are so easily transmittable is important, even though the cohort isn't susceptible to the disease as much as the older person, but still the elderly community is very much so, so what we do at the school is so important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanna make one small comment, that the cleaning and sanitation and sterilizing that we're doing at the schools is 100% safe, not, this may not be 100% effective against killing everything, but it is 100%. You said, yes. So it is 100% safe, it just may not be 100% effective against, yes. Just wanna clarify that in case, that's okay.
It's been a long day.
Trust me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other committee members have anything for 48 hours? No? All right. All right, then I will move on to subcommittee and project reports. We'll just go around. Liza, do you wanna? Are you okay?
Yeah, no, 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 it's fine. So on foster school, on Wednesday, we have a school council meeting, so that will be next meeting, I'll report back. And on the master plan, at our last meeting, we received a report from the consultants about the feedback from the visioning sessions and the survey that went out, and then they started compiling all that information and wrote a draft of a plan of what we will start discussing and working off of. And I believe I sent all of you a copy of the video from the meeting, it's posted on Harbor Media. I highly recommend that you all watch that, and the community watches it, because it does provide a very broad overview of the state of Hingham. And schools are mentioned primarily from a facility standpoint of that we need to make sure our facilities are up to date based on current educational practices, and they're not, all of them, but it also gets into climate change and sustainability issues, which are huge in Hingham, considering the harbor, the flooding, some of our sewer pumping stations are vulnerable to flooding, there are all kinds of issues. And then, but then it also talks about open space, historic preservation, economic development, affordable housing, like every topic you could want, traffic, sidewalks are related to schools, that there's a lot of feedback in town that people want more sidewalks, but they also want sidewalks repaired, and, you know, that's a huge undertaking, that's not on any of the capital lists. So the beginning of the video is the presentation, and then there's about an hour of our initial discussion of it, and the committee raised a lot of, we corrected a few things that they had mentioned, but we also asked for more data of how they came to some of their statements. And so we have a lot more work to do from the committee standpoint, but it is the initial overview and what we're gonna work off of. So, yeah, if you can take the time to do some chores around the house, or, it's well worth listening to. And at our meeting on the 18th, we have our next meeting, the 18th, and then the 25th. On the 18th, we will start talking about facilities and services and housing as those two topics to start getting into. So the facilities discussion should be interesting, considering the recent news of what the selectmen are voting on tonight, and then, you know, just lots of other things going on, so I'll report some more on that. But the master plan is, we're starting to get into the meat of the work and the in-depthness of the work, and I can say, it's fascinating process, and I'm honored to be doing it, but I'm also very pleased that, I think I've said this before, it's a really good thing that the schools are part of this, to provide information to everyone else, but for us to get the information and for us to be able to understand, you know, everything else happening in town, so, yeah, it's really good. Yeah.
And that was the seal.
Yes. But I also feel, I think that the other people in the committee, and I've heard from other people on the planning board, that they get it, why it's important to have schools' representation on that committee, which hadn't been in the past, so it's been good for everybody.
Yeah. That's true. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Ness?
Yep, so I have East, they did both first groups that were set up to discuss their survey results, they sent the survey results to the parents earlier in the year, they had two different times, on February 26th that they met, and some of the things that came up were enrichment programs being offered, the availability to kids, the new grading system, people had comments about that, and that they wanted to understand that process more, maybe get some more communication around that. And then the next big thing was the entrance age for kindergarteners, they appreciated the guidance that was set for. Next meeting is on March 25th, and then for community outreach, I, along with Dr. Jamie and Dr. Austin, we met with the website design people to just talk about the layout, and the stakeholders, and who's gonna be interested in seeing that information, and what information we should be providing, so it was a really good, thoughtful meeting.
It was a pretty cool process.
Yeah, it was really.
Nice process.
Yeah.
Is there a timeline for the?
They did put a timeline, I believe, is it March 1st? No, not March 1st, April 1st?
April 1st.
They were gonna deliver something, and then possibly the summer, they're going to roll it out, so that the teachers can start looking at it, with the hopes that it's done middle of the summer, and that it's available by the time the school starts. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
But they're gonna transport all the information that's on the current website, and so even, like, the individual teacher sites?
They're gonna move those over.
I don't have a good answer to that.
Have links?
Links, I think.
I think it would be linked to those things, because we didn't want to have the teachers to change those things that they already have, that they're comfortable with, so there would be links to it in the new process.
And will it be training for teachers to move into the new process?
Right, yes.
So it's more seamless?
Yes.
But they're, you know, teachers could have the availability to keep with their old sites?
Yeah.
But learn the new site if they would like.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask a question about, well, did I want to take into consideration, we have a link to the teacher's site through Google Classroom? Have we thought about that since a lot of teachers use Google Classroom to my experience?
We have done about that, so I suspect they'll be able to do that, yes.
Yeah, I know that, I do recall that was on the list of things that we had asked them that we were gonna need to have functionality to be able to do that, yes. Thanks, June.
Okay, Long Range Planning will be meeting on the 24th, Tuesday, the 24th, at 4:30 PM at the school department, to go over the capital numbers, capital laid, proposed numbers, and so everyone is invited to that. Hingham High School Council met on March 4th, they went over a draft that the students put together, that will go out to illuminate of Hingham High, seeking the input, you know, the graduation requirements. We also, there was a huge brainstorm strategy for improving cultural proficiency at the high school, you know, not only the high school, but across the board, whatever needed. It was recommended that the council also work with the Office of Diversity and Equal Opportunity at the state level, to see if we can come up with some ways of bringing diversity trainings to our schools and staff. So they looked into that, and we did ask that the SLA panel discussion be brought back to the forefront, because there seems to be a huge interest in putting, or looking to put SLA panels from the beginning of the high school building all the way up to the parking lot. So it's sort of, sort of like a, you know, cavern, so people can come to the town meeting, there's a nice protection there from the weather.
Ah, yes.
It's far away from the road, so some people have concerns about this scenic road, that would not affect that, so who knows, we can generate some funds from that, so we'll be discussing that further, so.
Dr. Dennis, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but Carlos just reminded me, I think you and Dr. Liddila went to a hiring fair, diversity and inclusion.
Oh, yes, we went to the South Shore Minority Recruitment Fair on Saturday.
Yeah, how did that?
With Carol Perez, and we were able to engage in discussion with at least a dozen potential educators who were looking to come into the private school.
Okay.
So it was a really nice half a day that was spent at the Oakdale High School, it was awesome that they were willing to host, and there were quite a few districts there, so it was nice to be there with other groups who were taking it seriously, and wanting to recruit some new ones.
Great, thank you, thank you, thank you for attending, especially on a Saturday. And to Carol's and Dr. Jamie, they, you just reminded me about Scottos, so thank you. For me, special subcommittee, I'm gonna schedule something for next week, I'll have to send it out to you folks, and I'll check with your calendar first, just to talk, see what we, once we get our budget numbers, what we need, we can try to do a little deep dive into the special education budget. Metco, we were gonna have Mr. Joy on Thursday, but we'll spread some joy another time in the fall, and I think that's all I have.
As a matter of fact, because you brought that up.
Yes.
Mr. Joy, that was, people were looking forward to that as well.
I know.
It would bring a lot of conversation around diversity.
Yes, I know, it's good, well, people can keep.
We're hoping to reschedule that in the fall.
In the fall.
That's what our hope is right now. We know they're gonna do a fall troop, and they couldn't, they couldn't confirm they would do that, but we're gonna do everything we can to get it here in the fall.
Will they still be doing it for the kids during the day?
No, they will not be doing it for the kids, no.
Because there was some logistics with the crew and the actors, so, yeah, so it made a thing, right. Do you have anything?
So policy met last Thursday, and we started to go through the MASC policies and our policies side by side, and try to figure out what we wanna incorporate from theirs and keep it from ours, so we did that, we'll meet again on the 24th with Jim Hardy from MASC, and hopefully we'll have something soon for the full committee.
I heard that manual's very small.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's quite comprehensive. It's good, though, it'll be nice to, you know, get, it'll be easier to update, too, when, if we can use the catalogs that everybody else does, so.
I know, that is, I think, the best part about it, because there are so often times that we'll get some legislative update or some update from Mass, and then you're like, oh my gosh, now we have to completely revisit this policy, and they're like, oh wait, and that touches two other policies, and then it's, yeah, so that's gonna be great.
That'll make it much more efficient. The Hingham Middle School Council will meet next Monday.
I joined Dr. Austin, and we both attended the Plymouth River PTO meeting, crack of dawn last Wednesday. Dr. Austin did a very lengthy, very informative and lengthy.
Does that mean I talk too much?
No. No, it was very informative, and I say that because then he scooted, I stuck around, and I answered the, what did he? And I just couldn't help but reminisce that, it's a wonderful group, a very energetic group, but quite a bit different than the elementary PTOs I was on in the 80s.
We're gonna leave it there, but maybe you can tell us.
So who wants to take the credit for reminding folks at home that pizza palooza is coming up?
Well, I was looking at that.
Yeah, yep, hopefully.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's, yeah, Wednesday, March 25th, 5:00 to 7:00 at the high school.
And I tried to recruit a luca restaurant in Rockland.
Oh, yeah?
The pizza's delicious, so.
Yeah. Were they interested?
Yeah, they will look into it for next year.
Oh, okay.
They're very busy right now trying to do other stuff.
That's a great thought, I haven't thought of that. And so while we're on SNAP, the summer program and the Sunset Point Buddy Week registration is open now, and as, the spring programs will be up soon, so we have soccer, lacrosse, we're piloting that, and then baseball.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
You owe me for that one.
Yeah, thank you, Carlos.
All right, any other items now for that? All right, warrants, we just, we already talked about, all right, well, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open sessions, for the purpose of approval of minutes of the executive session of the school committee held on February 24th, 2020, and discussing matters related to the current HEA Unit A collective bargaining contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and discussing matters related to the collective bargaining negotiations with the HEA Unit A for the 2020-2023 contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
So moved?
Really quickly, just before I take the roll call vote, I just wanna note that we're gonna have the next two school committee meetings will be March 23rd and April 6th, back at the usual, the usual place, the school department conference room. So with that, Liza made the motion, Carlos seconded, so roll call.
Aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned to executive session, thank you, everyone.